What are you doing with Haji?
Streaming on YouTube.
Yes, we are.
Some background music, Megan. You know, a little, a little.
One day I'm gonna surprise you, David. We're least expecting it.
One of these meetings, one of these meetings, but I'm least expecting it, right?
All right, I will go ahead and call us to order at 6:33 PM. If anybody wants to make public comment, please raise your hand. I'll give everyone a minute. Anybody want to make public comment? All right, then we will move forward. So we've got a few things on the agenda tonight. We will start with the approval of the policy changes. The first policy that we are looking at is the sexual harassment policy, which is policy ACAB. So Emily and John and myself, as the policy subcommittee, met last Friday to go over both of the policies that are on the agenda for tonight. And actually, I'm looking, and it's wrongly stated that we're voting on it tonight. So this is our first reading. So the sexual harassment policy is, I actually, John, do you want to fill us in on the sexual harassment policy and why we're making changes to that today?
Sure, I'm happy to. A lot of changes at the federal level with Title IX that really adjusted the investigation process and procedure significantly for post-secondary schools, but also for K-12 education. And even though locally in Marblehead, we had done a good deal of work updating our sexual harassment policy, the Title IX changes at the federal level need to incorporate what people see before them this evening. And so this is adjusting to regulations at the national level that affect our local policy.
So Megan.
Can I ask a question or were you gonna clarify?
Yeah, I was just gonna ask if anybody had any questions.
So this may be a stupid question, so I apologize. But, you know, John, you mentioned that we had done quite a bit of work on this policy and, you know, related policies in the fall of last year that our legal counsel, John Foskett, had helped us with. So can, I mean, I'm guessing that you've run through this with him to make sure that everything that was in there is still covered by this new policy.
Yes, and he is intimately aware, of course, of issues at the local level. So he had an eye to incorporating the federal changes with regard to what happened here.
So what you have before you is actually the recommendation from John Foskett as to the policy that we adopt.
Correct.
We also had, there was a corresponding policy, I think, along specifically related to the procedures, right? Was that ACR? Is that affected by this policy or included? How does that work?
There, you don't need the ACR now because it incorporates those procedural elements in the policy itself.
Perfect, okay, thank you.
Yep, Sarah?
Just to follow up on what Megan asked, did anybody by chance reach out to our insurance Maya and make sure that all of these are in line with anything that they're seeing or working on and that we're not that, that we have the sign off from everybody and everything?
Um, we have not done that, but we can do that this week because, as I mentioned, this is, this will be the first read and then it'll come up next Thursday for our regularly scheduled meeting. And, and will, that will be when our vote is, so we can, we can run it past them too.
Okay, yeah, I just think that, you know, it never hurts.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Um, so if, I don't know if John will do that or if Megan will, will do that, but whoever does it, if they can just circle back.
I'm happy to.
Okay, thanks.
Sounds good. All right, any other questions? David, you good? All right, all right, so I don't, I don't have to read the policy verbatim, correct?
No, you do.
Okay. All right. So file ACAB sexual harassment. Sexual harassment of students or of employees by other students, employees, vendors, and other third parties will not be tolerated in the Marblehead Public Schools, which will be referred to as district going forward. The alleged harassment must involve conduct that occurred within the school's own program or activity, including at a location or under circumstances where the school owned or substantially controlled the premises, exercised oversight, supervision, or discipline over the location or participants, or funded, sponsored, promoted, or endorsed the event where the alleged harassment occurred, and must have occurred against a person in the United States. This policy is in effect while students are on school grounds, district property, or property within the jurisdiction of this district, on school buses, or while attending or engaging in school-sponsored activities. Students whose behavior is found to be in violation of this policy will be subject to disciplinary action up to and including suspension or expulsion pursuant to disciplinary codes. Employees who have been found to violate this policy will be subject to discipline up to and including termination of employment subject to contractual disciplinary obligations. The district will promptly and reasonably investigate allegations of sexual harassment through designation of a Title IX coordinator and building-based employees as set forth below. Sexual harassment is unwelcome conduct of a sexual nature. The definition includes unwelcome conduct on the basis of sex that is so severe pervasive and objectional, objectively offensive, that it effectively denies a person equal access to the school's education program or activity. It also includes unwelcome sexual advances, requests for sexual favors, and other verbal, nonverbal, or physical contact of a sexual nature. Sexual harassment includes conduct by an employee conditioning and educational benefit or service upon a person's participation in unwelcome sexual conduct, often called quid pro quo harassment and sexual assault, as the Federal Clary Act defines that crime. While it is not possible to list all the additional circumstances that may constitute sexual harassment, following are some examples of conduct which, if unwelcome, may constitute sexual harassment, depending on the totality of the circumstances, including the severity of the conduct and its pervasiveness, unwelcome sexual advances, whether they involve physical touching or not, sexual epithets, jokes, written or oral references to sexual conduct, gossip regarding one's sex life, comment on an individual's body, comment on an individual's sexual activity, deficiencies or prowess, displaying sexually suggestive objects, pictures, cartoons, unwelcome leering, whistling, rushing against the body, sexual gestures, suggestive or insulting comments, inquiries into one's sexual experiences, and discussion of one's sexual activities. The legal definition of sexual harassment is broadened in addition to the above examples. Other sexual oriented conduct, whether it is intended or not, that is unwelcome and has the effect of creating environment that is hostile, offensive, intimidating, or sorry, intimidating to male, female, or gender non-conforming students or employees may also constitute sexual harassment. Because the district takes allegations of sexual harassment seriously, we will respond promptly to the complaints of sexual harassment. And following an investigation where it is determined that such inappropriate conduct has occurred, we will act promptly to eliminate the conduct and impose corrective action as is necessary, including disciplinary action where appropriate. Please note that while this policy sets forth our goals of promoting an environment that is free of sexual harassment, policy is not designed or intended to limit our authority to discipline or take remedial action for conduct, which we deem unacceptable regardless of whether that conduct satisfies the definition of sexual harassment. For example, conduct that constitutes harassment other than sexual harassment, bullying, violation of the student disciplinary code, or school district workplace rules, unlawful discrimination, hazing, or student misconduct statutes will be investigated and addressed under the district relevant policies and the applicable laws. A complaint isn't, is an, complaintant isn't an individual who is alleged to be a victim of conduct that would constitute sexual harassment. Respondent is an individual who has been reported to be the perpetrator of the conduct that could constitute sexual harassment or a violation of this policy. Retaliation against a complaintant because the complaintant has filed a sexual harassment complaint or assisted or participated in sexual harassment investigation or proceeding is also prohibited. A student or employee who is found to have retaliated against another in violation of this policy will be subject to disciplinary action up to and including student suspension and expulsion or employee termination. The complaint, it does not have to be a person at whom the unwelcome sexual conduct is directed. The complaintant, regardless of gender, may be a witness to and personally offended by such content, conduct. Notice of sexual harassment. The regulations require a school district to respond when the district has actual knowledge of sexual harassment. Schools must treat seriously all reports of sexual harassment that meet the definition of sexual harassment and the conditions of actual notice and jurisdiction, whether or not the complaintant files a formal complaint. A formal complaint is a document filed by a complaintant or signed by the Title IX coordinator alleging sexual harassment against a correspondent and requesting that the district investigate the allegation of sexual harassment. Schools are required to investigate every formal complaint and respond meaningfully to every known report of sexual harassment. Upon receipt of allegations of Title IX, coordinator shall promptly contact the complaintant confidentially to discuss the availability of support measures. Consider the complaintant's wishes with respect to supportive measures. Inform the complaintant that supportive measures are available with or without the filing of a formal complaint and explain the process for filing a formal complaint. Supportive measures include, but are not limited to, non-disciplinary, non-punitive individualized services offered as appropriate, as reasonably available, and without fee or charge to the complaintant or the respondent before or after the filing of a formal complaint or where no formal complaint has been filed. Such measures are designed to restore or preserve equal access to education programs or activities without unreasonably burdening other party, including measures designed to protect the safety of all parties or the district's educational environment or to deter sexual harassment. Supportive measures may include counseling, extensions of deadlines, or other course-related adjustments, modifications of work or class schedules, school building slash campus escort services, mutual restrictions to contact between the parties, changes in work location, leaves of absence, increased security and monitoring of certain areas of the building and campus, and other similar measures. Where there has been a finding of responsibility, the regulations require remedies designed to restore or preserve access to the school's education program or activity. Due process protections. Due process protections in connection with investigation and decision-making regarding a complaint or a complaint include the following. One, if the allegations do not meet the definition of sexual harassment and satisfy the requirements regarding location or connection to an educational program of the school district, the allegation shall be dismissed for purpose of Title IX, but may be investigated and addressed under other prohibitions given the student discipline code, relevant collective bargaining agreements, and other laws under which they fit. Two, a presumption of innocence throughout the grievance process, which is the burden of proof on the school. Three, a complaintant's wishes with respect to whether the school investigates will be respected unless the Title IX coordinator determines that signing a formal complaint to initiate an investigation over the wishes of the complaintant is not clearly unreasonable in light of the unknown circumstances. For a prohibition of the single investigator model, instead requiring a decision-maker separate from the Title IX coordinator or investigator. Proof by the preponderance of the evidence subject to limitations. Six, the opportunity to test the credibility of parties and witnesses through disclosure of evidence and opportunity to submit additional questions subject to rape shield protections. Seven, written notice of allegations and an equal opportunity to review the evidence upon filing a formal complaint. Eight, an objective evaluation of all relevant evidence in culpatory and exculpatory and avoidance of credibility determinations based on a person's status as a complaintant, respondent, or witness. Nine, Title IX coordinators, investigators, and decision-makers must be trained and free from bias or conflict of interest. Ten, a right to appeal from the determination regarding responsibility from a dismissal of a formal complaint or the allegations therein, where the determination or dismissal involved any of the following procedural irregularity that affect the outcome, newly discovered evidence that could affect the outcome, or the Title IX coordinator, the investigator, or the decision-maker had a conflict of interest or bias that affected the outcome. Eleven, as long as the process is voluntary for all parties, after being fully informed and written consent is provided by both parties, school may facilitate informal resolution of a formal sexual complaint, but no such informal resolution can be used where the allegations that are that an employee sexually harassed a student. A district may establish an informal investigation process that may, upon the request of the complaintant, be followed by a formal process. Nine coordinators in the district are Nan Murphy, Assistant Superintendent, 9 Widge Road, Marblehead, Massachusetts, 781-639-3140, and Eric Oxford, Director of Student Services, 9 Widge Road, Marblehead, Massachusetts, The Title IX coordinator or the school building principal shall be the initial entity to receive the sexual harassment complaint. In all cases, the Title IX coordinator shall be informed as soon as possible of the filing of the complaint. Nothing in this policy shall prevent any person from recording the prohibited conduct other than those designated complaint recipients. An employee with actual knowledge of conduct that may violate this policy must report to the Title IX coordinator. The district may remove a respondent of an emergent, on an emergency basis after undertaking an individualized safety and risk analysis and determining that an immediate threat to the physical safety or the safety of any student or an other individual arising from the allegations justifies removal. District will provide the respondent with written notice and an opportunity to challenge the decision immediately following the removal and accordance with any applicable law, collective bargaining agreements, and student handbook investigations. Investigating officer shall be an assistant principal in the building or other re administrative designated by the principal. The investigating officers in the district are Michelle Carlson, Assistant Principal, Marblehead High School, 2 Humphrey Street, Marblehead, Massachusetts, 781-639-3100, and Stephen Gallo, Assistant Principal of the Village School, 93 Village Street, Marblehead, Massachusetts, 781-639-3159. The investigation shall be conducted in such a way as to maintain confidentiality to the extent applicable, to the extent practicable under the circumstances and in compliance with applicable law. The investigation shall be prompt, thorough, and impartial, and will include and at least a private interview with the complaintant, with the respondent, and with witnesses. The investigator shall give the parties equal opportunity to present facts and expert witnesses and other inculpatory and exculpatory evidence. They'll give each party the same opportunities to select an advisor of the party's choice, who may but need not be an attorney, shall send written notice of all interviews or meetings, shall send to the party's evidence directly related to the allegations in an electronic form or hard copy with at least 10 days' school days for the parties to inspect, review, and respond, and shall prepare and submit an investigative report with, that fairly summarizes the relevant evidence to the decision-maker, who shall be the principal or his or her designee other than the investigator. The investigator shall strive to complete investigations within 25 school days of the filing of the formal complaint and resumptive of the investigation after an unsuccessful information resolution meeting. During the investigation, the investigator shall take the following steps. One, the investigator shall interview the complaintant to obtain a clear understanding of that complaintant's allegations within five school days of the filing of the formal complaint, provided that the complaintant is available to be interviewed by the investigator. Two, the investigator will interview the respondent to obtain a response to the complaintant's allegations from the respondent within five school days of the interview with the complaintant, provided that the respondent is available to be interviewed with the investigator. The investigator will interview witnesses identified by the complaintant or respondent within five school days of being identified as a potential witness.
Sarah, 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 if I, if I could, I think you are doing an excellent job in reading, in reading this policy, and I really appreciate it. But I've been on the school committee for six years, and we have never engaged in this procedure. So if I could just interject for a second here. Policy adoption, file BCG for the school committee identifies the procedures for school committees to adopt policies. And it says to permit time for the study of all policies, and as you've said, this is the first time, we're not voting it tonight, of all policies or amendments, and to provide an opportunity for interested parties to react. Proposed policies and/or amendments will be presented as an agenda item in the following sequence. So the idea of three readings or three times that it appears on the agenda is as follows. Item one, information item distributed with the agenda. Item two, discussion. A response from the superintendent, a report from any advisory committee, a committee discussion, and direction from any redrafting. Item three is an action item where there is discussion, adoption, and/or rejection. So I'm not seeing anything within our policy adoptions that requires you to continue to show how well you can read documents. And they are part of the public record, and they will be made available, and we are not voting for them tonight. So based on what I'm seeing here and my past experience of six years and Jen Schaffner and everybody else working on policies, I really don't think we need to have you continue reading this policy.
Well, then I will gladly stop.
I don't know how, I don't know how everybody else feels about it.
Yeah, I would agree with that, David. I just think, you know, this is eight pages and the next one's eight pages. I don't know that it's the best use of our time. I would say, you know, obviously, I was on the policy committee the last two years, and we didn't make that many policy changes. But it's my understanding from my work there, from Dorothy, that, you know, we don't have to necessarily read it verbatim. It's more about the process to comment and provide the policy to the public as well and make sure that the policy committee has had a chance to review and revise.
Exactly, and that's why we have the three-step process, so that people can see it, review it, revise, comment, and it's not something that gets done in one night. Exactly.
Great. It's been, it's been my understanding, having read the policy book, that, that we're required by, by our policy and by law to publicly read the, the policy that's being voted on twice in two separate, in separate meetings, twice prior to voting on it, but.
Well, I just, I just, I mean, if somebody wants to share the screen, I just pulled up policy adoption file BGB.
Yeah, I guess my understanding, it's not a literal meaning of the word, reading. Maybe it should say presentation. But I think it's more the presentation and the discussion around it and the ability, obviously, for the public to have a chance to read and comment as well.
Right, and I think in the sequence we're in tonight, we are in item one, which is information item, a distribution of the agenda, with the agenda. So the policy has been distributed with the agenda. The next time we bring it up, there will be discussion, and then the third time, we will take action on it. That's the way I see policy BGB.
Yeah, and I know we didn't, when we adopted all those policies a couple of years ago, we certainly didn't read through the entire policy book.
We were down there for days.
So we will move on, I apologize. Um, so that brings us then to the approval of the supplemental policies on COVID-related issues, which is policy proposal EBC supplemental. So that also is in everybody's Dropbox, as well as you were given a Google Doc because we had the hot links put in for the policy, the current policies that we have that kind of relate back to where some of these bullet points are referring to within our policy book. So basically, what this is going to allow us to do is without going back to every single individual policy that may be touched by COVID, we will adopt this EBC supplemental policy for the time of COVID. And then once we can back off on the restrictions that COVID is, is putting on us, we can then just go back and rescind one policy instead of, I think there was about 31 policies referenced within this, this write-up. So does anybody have any questions about EBC supplemental?
Thank you for putting it into a Word document with hyperlinks. That made it much easier to review, so I appreciate that.
No problem. It was a good way, as I, as the reason I wanted to be on the policy committee. It's a good way to start to get to know the policies a lot better.
Silver lining of COVID.
Any other questions on this one? All right, then they, again, they will be on our meeting, I believe, next Thursday, it's the 17th. So they will be there, and that will be the point at which we will vote on them. So then that leads us to approval of the handbooks. One of the reasons that we had tabled this last week was so that we could get a better handle on these COVID-related policy issues so that it's reflective of particularly the attendance piece. So there are a couple of things wrapped into our Dropbox. One is, is the final handbook changes for the high school, and then the others are the pre-K through six handbook and the veterans handbook. Does anybody have any questions on that before we move? Megan?
I just have a clarification really from my own edification around the ID badges at the high school. Can you just talk through that piece?
So is Dan, does Dan happen to be on tonight?
I don't.
You know, it doesn't, it's not gonna hold up, it's not gonna hold up my vote, so I can follow up with him offline, if that's easier.
I did ask Dan a question as we were doing the building walkthroughs about the use of student IDs, and I know that it's been something that they've kind of had in fits and starts over the past couple of years, trying to, trying to get it taken, get it used more often. And so he, I know at that point, was very hesitant to make this year the year to, to start with the student IDs.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
All right, so can I get a motion to accept the high school handbook changes for 2020 and 2021 school year, as well as the changes for the pre-K through six handbook and the veterans handbook?
So moved.
Megan moved.
Second.
Emily, second. Any last comments? All right, roll call vote, Sarah Gold, yes, Megan Taylor?
Yes.
Sarah Fox?
Yes.
David Harris?
Yes, and I just want to say thank you to how it was presented, where the, where the changes to the handbooks were put.
I think, I think David, yep, okay. And then Emily?
Yes.
All right, so that passes five to zero, thanks, guys. Okay, so that leads us to our final agenda item this evening, which is approval of the memorandum of agreement with the Marblehead Education Association. So I know everybody has had this document for a couple of days. We've had a chance to talk with John and ask him questions. It was approved by the union on, what night was that, Tuesday night, John?
Yes.
Okay, so Tuesday night, they approved it. So I will go ahead and ask for a motion to approve and accept the memorandum of agreement with the Marblehead Education Association.
So moved.
Megan moved.
Second.
Emily, second. All right, um, any questions? I think David, we may have lost David, so I think he, hopefully, we've got a couple of questions or comments as he tries to get back on.
I'll just reiterate for all of you, because, you know, I voiced my, my one concern with John earlier, but as it was, you know, not the general committee, obviously, we're not wanting to deliberate outside of the public meeting. I thought I would share it with you. My only, my concern on it, it was the provision that requires teachers teaching remotely, or teaching a remote class with, who do not, have not obtained a release from the district due to like an ADA reason for, for being the remote, or teaching from home to, to teach in their classroom and in the building. I had several concerns about that. I had um several concerns about that, you know. Real estate in our buildings is at a premium. I was worried about using up space when. For for uh, some to teach when children are in that space. I was worried about that. I was worried about, you know, anytime anybody walks in a bu- building. Anywhere in life, whether it's a grocery store or wherever, there's, you know. Some risk attributed to it. So the idea that. We could minimize risks further by by not having people teaching in from buildings if they're, if they're teaching to a remote. Student body. Um, there was a few pieces. John and I talked through it. I'm prepared to still vote. Um, obviously, the union voted to approve it, so they they must be feeling okay with it. I just had some. Questions about it. I know some districts have done away with it, that piece of it. Um, but that was really the only, the only piece of it that kind of stuck to me.
Um, so I think, you know, I know when when I did the walkthrough with the union a couple of weeks ago and as well as John and a few other people. And and Andrew Petty, um, I I found that they were, that there were, there was plenty of space for people. They they had thought very long and very hard about providing spaces for teachers, um, not having. Multiple teachers unless it was a co-taught classroom and those teachers were in agreement. So um, I mean, John, correct me if I'm wrong on that, but I think. You know, the it, it's a, it's a piece where where people are going into a space that is, that is really designated as theirs.
Yes, and part of the conversation that Sarah Fox and I had this morning was that some of our uh teachers that have been granted. Remote learning, teaching um due to medical conditions or that frees up. Some real estate in the building which creates additional space. So um, I I certainly appreciate the concern, but as we found walking through the district. There are enough spaces to accommodate the staff, particularly when we return to the hybrid in uh full on October fifth. Those educators will need to be in the building and so having them there during the remote learning piece. Uh, whenever we're in remote learning, I I think is important.
David, welcome back. Uh, you're muted.
No, thanks. I lost internet connection there for a minute, had to reset everything.
Um, so we, we do have a motion and it's seconded for to accept uh the memorandum of agreement. So that's just what we're discussing right now.
Great, thank you.
I don't know if you had any, any further questions or comments or wanted to highlight anything that you and John had discussed.
Well, if if it has not been discussed. While I was away for a few minutes, I think one of the things was the idea that there would be an opportunity during the remote learning period for students to. Potentially meet with their teachers.
Absolutely, and I think that families, some of you sitting on this uh call this evening. Um, have enjoyed the opportunity to uh visit schools and meet teachers and uh to make those connections. And so uh that language is not precluding those events from happening.
And as we talked about, some of those, some of the more important ones were the. What we call, I guess, the step up or the move up opportunities from. You know, third grade up to Village and sixth grade up to the Vets and eighth grade up to the high school and I'm sure. Dan and Matt Fox and Amanda are all. Working, but I think those are some of the critical junctures, not that a tenth grader moving to eleventh grade might. Not want to see what it's going to be like. Um, but they've been in the high school, but I think those are some, some of the critical areas and it's also um. First time kindergartners, for instance, coming in, coming into their school, whether, you know, what that experience is going to, going to be like. And I can just say that when I was at Woodger Road, I. When I was being buzzed in, the mailbox was sitting to the right of me and I noticed there were all these postcards. And um, they were postcards from a kindergarten teacher going out to all the individual uh incoming students. So I thought that was a nice touch. So I'm sure there's all kinds of other ways that. Teachers are trying to engage their students and welcome them in, but um. I I hope that if there is the opportunity over the next three weeks, as you say, um, John, that that. It's not precluding parents and students from from coming into schools to um. Provide an extra comfort level. Where where it might be needed and.
Well, this gives me an opportunity to celebrate our staff because the creativity. That they're employing to make this very unique uh return to school special and inviting. Certainly, they leaders are hearing from Nan and me uh on a daily basis, just how critical. These meetings are and even for our fully remote learners to feel connected. Um, to the school and to the staff and to have those opportunities to interact and build relationships. And so um, I am confident that those are happening and will continue to happen until we're into our full hybrid model. So I appreciate that question.
Meg?
Can I just fall on from that? Because I think um, you know, John, I mentioned something similar to what David said earlier. And I think, you know, David mentioned a lot of those transition points. There's one um, you know, that he hasn't mentioned that I feel like I want to make sure does not get dropped. And that's the second graders that are going from Coffin into third, into third grade at Village because, you know. A, they're younger, not that that matters, you know, the transition's a transition, but this is a big move for them. They've never stepped foot. Many of them, you know, unless they have older siblings, haven't been into Village. Um, it's a big school, it's a big change for them, so I want to make sure that they don't get dropped off, um, you know, kind of that list of transitions. Um, and. I think, you know, what David said and what you've said about making the relationships and the connections are important, but also seeing the space where they're going to be. And figuring out how they're going to maneuver, and this is true for every transition. Where's the bathroom? How do they get places? Um, where's their classroom in relation to the front door? All those things, like getting inside and seeing it and having that opportunity. Um, it's gonna be, I think, a very helpful and important step for them. Um, you know, I haven't seen what's gone out to all the parents. Um, I can speak as a parent myself um for. Um, you know, kids moving into Village, is it, they're scheduled right now for a meet and greet, which I think is great, but it's basically a drive by. So I'm hoping that we'll see more information around what additional transition activities we're gonna see. Um, for that group of kids and I'm hope, you know, hopeful that the same thing will be happening for the other transition periods or, you know, grades. Uh, so I just want to make sure that we're kind of covering everyone that's transitioning.
I appreciate that, Megan, and I think that it really supports the work that Nan and I are doing, not that leaders don't believe us. But of just how critically important this is to make those connection points special and meaningful. And not that you feel like you're going through a drive through window or that you're watching a Zoom welcome. But that it is really a personalized approach. And, you know, um, we work uh with leaders to make sure that there's consistency as well. Across grade levels and across buildings, so that the the experience for a third grade child at the Glover. Is not markedly different from those third graders that are going to be at Village. And so I I appreciate that comment and the feedback, uh, because leaders are hearing that from Nan and I on a regular basis.
Yeah, and I'm really glad you just mentioned that consistency piece, because that's the other piece that's been in the back of my mind since, you know, this whole thing started back in March and we talked about it. Um, you know, when we were looking at the remote piece in the spring is that consistency. Of experience should be the same for all students, you know, regardless of what school or what teacher you have. And so I think, you know, you definitely don't want to infringe on the discretion and the creativity that you've talked about for teachers. That's important. Um, but we also just have to make sure that the student experience is consistent and that's kind of more, you know, your role and I think the principal's role. So I think consistency is key here.
Agreed.
Emily?
I'm just going off what Megan said. Um, another group that I don't want to have been forgotten in that move up is. The kindergartners from Evolith going into first grade. I don't know if they were mentioned. They've never been to Coffin. So that's just another group that is entering a whole new building and who are little. And it's a much bigger school that they're coming from, so that same. Um, thing is the second graders going to Village and just. To reiterate what Megan said, the consistency among all the grade levels of all the schools. Um, is so important and as you know, the information that comes, goes out to parents needs to be more and. It needs to be more, better and more concise and organized and understandable, but we've talked about that a lot.
But but I think that it's important, Emily, for you to share that. Um, in addition to being a school committee member, you are a parent, as are many of our school committee. And you don't take that hat off uh by being a school committee uh member. And so giving that feedback to me, and this is a delicate balance, as the new superintendent, how prescriptive to be. In this and how much uh to allow leaders the autonomy in their buildings. And so in finding that balance, um, we may have to circle back and uh readjust things. In in particular, as uh family or as uh we receive feedback from constituents. And if there's one thing Marblehead's good at, it's providing feedback.
And you do have the lucky uh benefit of having four of your five school committee members with second graders transitioning over to Village.
Yay, me.
Um, to, one thing, and.
Don't leave, don't leave me out of this.
Sorry, David.
If you left out and want a third grader, I can, I can hammer. But uh, I I, I wanted to add a piggyback on this a little bit, but I worry that we're getting away from the M O A discussion. Um, and into maybe new, I don't know what would call this new business or whatever, but um, I can hold it off till after the vote. Because it it really, I, I don't know how much of this really pertains to the M O A.
Fair enough. Thank you for redirecting us back to the M O A. I appreciate that, because it's easy to go off on the tangent.
So I think, I think the piece with the M O A was the aspect that, and I was looking for it a little while ago and I can't find it on the fly, but the piece where. It was stated that how much interaction before, like in that remote period that teachers will have with their students.
Section two.
Okay, thanks. Um, so there was a few of us that had some concerns with that particular line or two, so.
Yeah. Um, so I'll save my comment till after we vote.
All right, sounds good. Does anybody else have any more comments that they want? And otherwise I will call for a vote. Megan?
This, this is just a comment and I meant to start my piece off with it, but, you know, I know a lot of work has gone in to this from Sarah and John and Joan and the other M E A. Um, executives. Um, and also all of the teachers, you know, so I feel like if. The teachers and the administration are happy with this and, you know, obviously the M E A has voted in favor of it at this point. That, you know, I just appreciate the work. I appreciate the support from the teachers. Um, so, you know, I just wanted to make sure that that was recognized.
I appreciate that, Megan.
And I will echo the the few meetings that I sat in with uh to to look at this, the, you know, the conversations were. Um, were very collaborative. Um, you know, it was a back and forth of, you know, here's where the concerns are, here's what we can do. Um, suggestions, here's, you know, if we don't do this here, the concerns that that the union had. Um, so it was, it, you know, as John has said, it's been, it's been a really good experience through and through. Um, and and I would voice support for for those statements.
And I'll just, I don't know if this was mentioned when I was offline, but. As an example, the the piece that was put in about about childcare, I mean, after all, teaching is all about. The children and it's all about students and um we know that our teachers um. Have students in school and I think that was a really nice add to be able to um. Allow teachers to have the opportunity when some remote learning is going on and, you know, it's pretty clear, even though. The document's ten pages long, I think you could really boil it down to three or four pages of. Specific things that just needed to be spelled out. I think a lot of the things. Um, we all know that they're in the best interest of our, of our students, faculty, staff. And parents and and those things would would have happened. E- even without, without this agreement, but to have, to have it memorialized and and documented is a good thing and I. Credit to the people that um spent the time working on this and I think it does represent when we see what's happening. Um, in other districts and what's happening uh outside of Marblehead that. I really appreciate the cooperative effort that's gone into um putting this M O U forward so that. You know, we we can start school on Monday. It's exciting.
It is exciting.
Actually, David just said something that reminded me of a question. John, that section about the childcare, I know the governor had or the commissioner had made an order at one point saying that. Something about you could bring your children if. They had to be able to be enrolled in your working district, something to that effect. Does that section on childcare cover, say, we're open, but their home district is still full remote? Are the teachers then allowed to bring their child even though we will have students in the classroom?
Not when we are in hybrid unless they're enrolling here.
Okay, all right, so they would have to enroll their student in like, say, the first grade or whatever.
Yes, it, which is the provision that the commissioner made in that to allow that flexibility, like Marblehead is not a school choice district.
Mm-hmm.
But he would open that up to allow that flexibility for a district who, say, there's a high school Spanish teacher, just to use my own discipline as an example. That wanted to bring their child to Marblehead because we're doing hybrid and they're maybe in full remote and they don't have childcare.
Okay, all right, I just want a clarification that we wouldn't have their children and and students in the, in the class.
All right, um, well, with that then, I will call for a roll call vote. Sarah Gold, yes. Megan Taylor?
Yes.
Sarah Fox?
Yes.
Emily Barron?
Yes.
And David Harris?
Yes.
All right. So that passes five to zero. We are set to open on Monday.
That is very, through the chair, if I may.
Right, yes.
Um, can I, my question now that I kind of was holding on to?
Hold on, did John have one thing to to say?
Yeah, I just, I I think I would be remiss not to uh acknowledge M E A and Robin and Sally and Joan. Um, you know, in any negotiation, people do not walk away with everything that they want. But the spirit of uh concession and collaboration here, I think is, speaks to Marblehead. And you just have to watch the news and look at some of the angst and in many cases vitriol and anger. And us against them that are occurring, that is occurring across the Commonwealth in districts. And I consider myself fortunate every day with the relationship that we have with our teachers. And I know some are not happy uh with some of the things in the M O A and as the superintendent, there are things that I would have. Uh, not included in the M O A, but at the end of the day. It is what is getting us to Sarah's cheer that we're opening on Monday. And teachers are back in classrooms and students are going to be getting a robust remote learning experience into the hybrid on October fifth. So I would, I look at, look at it as celebrate what we have.
Yeah, we are incredibly fortunate.
Yep. All right, Sarah, now you've got your question.
Um, this kind of piggybacks on what Emily and Sarah and Megan were kind of commenting. That piece that we get from, you know, being, wearing the parent hat and in that. Um, I I know that people are so appreciative of the Back Together Marblehead website and the communication with that. And it's, and it's really, it's been wonderful. Um, I know there's Google Classroom, I know there's all these places. But I think one of the biggest concerns last spring for a lot of parents were their, that information was in a lot of places. Which it's just natural that it will be in a lot of places, but I'm wondering if even for the first few weeks that. There's one place it's always guaranteed to be, um, maybe like, you know, there, everything will be in an email also to parents. So those, these first three weeks, I think you're gonna be, you know, a bit of a hurdle of what time do they sign on and what do we do and this and that. And if parents are knowing that they're only checking their email because. Yes, there will be also information on Back Together Marblehead and these other places, but for instance. Back Together can't put everything from a teacher on there too, or or at a class level, particular, you know, class and cohort level. But we know that everything that goes on there maybe comes with an update via email as well. Is it possible that? We can make sure, at least for these first three weeks, that it's like there is a one stop shopping for every last piece. Is it possible that we can make sure, at least for these first three weeks, that it's like, there is a one-stop shopping for every last piece of information? And that people don't have to kind of check multiple places?
The quick answer is we can do anything, the more complicated answer is you've almost foreshadowed my superintendent's weekly update for this week, that people are still looking at central office as the hub for information, but it has really transitioned down to the building level, and that's going to further transition down into the classroom level. And so, I know that Nan produced a wonderful newsletter from the Office of Teaching and Learning today that addresses many of the concerns or anxieties, or back-to-school questions that people have right now. BackTogetherMHD.com is a wealth of information, and we've added things this week that will be in the superintendent's update, but a help center for parents and resources. I would say that right now, a family or a parent's best go-to would be the classroom teacher. If there is a question about logging on, or schedules, or time, start times, that was this week's anxiety-producing, what time is all that starting on Monday? And so, again, as the questions come up, we tried to fill that out on the Back Together MHD.com website, so that we're pushing out information, tweeting, start times have been updated, or tweeting. That schedule template is up, so that we're trying to answer the questions in real time and to provide the resources. But I think the quick answer to your question, Sarah, is yes, we can do anything, but the classroom teacher, I think, at the granular level right now is the best resource for a parent.
Okay, that's perfect, because I'm kind of of the mindset, like, if I didn't get an email about it from the classroom teacher, it didn't happen.
Fair.
On the app? Can I just add one thing onto that, and, you know, I know it's Thursday and school starts on Monday, so maybe it's too late, but just going through with my older daughter. They, for her, they do it by grade teams, she's at Charter. And so, that sixth-grade team sent out information on how to log on to the different things, so that we could test it, you know, a few days before the start of school. And yes, there were still some bumps along the way, which I think is expected, that's gonna happen no matter what, but it just gave us a few days to kind of practice it. You know, and make sure that we've kind of got our system started, so I don't know if that's possible to get out before, you know, Sunday night.
Similar to what I said to Sarah, anything is possible. I know there are lots of ears listening to this right now, and I'm sure that work is already being done to address that, so that we can push that out to families.
Great, alright, well, that is the end of our agenda, so I will adjourn us at seven twenty-four. Thanks, everyone.
John, we did it!
Yeah.
You did it! I'm so happy and proud, all at the same time!
Well done, John.
Don't expect this to be any kind of like a regular occurrence, so.
No, I anticipate next Thursday being, my favorite word, very robust.
Well, you got six-thirty in one hour, so.
Yep.
Bring a sleeping bag next Thursday.
It's the banner day.
For a regular schedule to seven though, right?
We, yes, we are, yeah.
Alright, thank you.
We can, we can put that as another agenda item if you want, John.
Okay. David, you know how I like building out the agenda?
Yes, you do. You like it to be two-page.
Thanks, Sean, Nan, and everybody, well done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, thanks, everyone.